You can either bring it around the other side.
You know, what you've got to do on that side to leave your face to all of us.
Oh, is that over here?
Yeah. This way, it's easier if you're facing that. Kind of make it look.
Well, the real chief's now.
Mayor, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We are getting ready to start our meeting. Sorry about that. Hi, Dominic. So we will be... How are you? So we'll be muting the public lines, and I just ask that Councilman Fasolo, who's participating via teleconference, unmute his line when I do so.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Okay, if Councilman Fasolo can unmute himself, then we'll begin the meeting. Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for September 3, 2020, to order at 7:01 PM. On roll call, council members, Fasolo.
Yes, here.
Goleback.
Here.
Ingui.
Here.
Pellegrini.
Here.
Wettler.
Here.
Council President Ballesteri.
Here.
Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. I would like to welcome everyone to our work meeting, where as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the Barrow Clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being videotaped, and will be available on the Barrow's website Ms. Delaney?
Please note that due to precautionary measures to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, we have a conference call set up for the public to call as a means of participating in tonight's meeting. For the public's information and record, the public's lines will be muted except for when we open the meeting up for public hearing portions. We thank you in advance for your patience during the operation of tonight's meeting.
May I have a motion to open for public comment? All in favor? Ms. Delaney, would you be so kind to open up the lines?
At this time, I will be unmuting the public's lines. For anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
All participat... All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time?
Jeffrey Frytag.
Hello.
Hey, Dominic, go ahead.
Hi.
Okay, so we have Mr. Scalcion and Mr. Frytag, who wishes to speak. If Mr. Frytag can go first.
Okay, Jeffrey Frytag, 35, Long Drive. Good evening. Um, one thing I'd like to know, when I'm living right next to Twella Avenue, which actually connects with my street, I've been kind of observing what's going on with the project there. Has there been any report of anything where the homeowners, I believe it was supposed to be identified by the contractor, if any of them have... Don't have copper lines? I believe it was Mr. Cars had made a statement that all do have copper lines. Has anything been found otherwise on Twella Avenue?
Our engineer is with us this evening. We would have him answer your question, Jeff.
So what we've had the contractor do at this point is make a note of any lines that he's found to be copper or lead. I don't know in particular which ones are copper or lead at this moment, but he's supposed to have made a note for the purposes of the residents being able to make any kind of adjustments or changes to their services in the future. On that note, just because he finds that at the curb stop doesn't necessarily mean that the rest of the lines are copper or lead. There are, you know, an extension of services that goes beyond the property line, which he did not inspect. But anything that he does note, he does make a... He does make a record of.
Jeff, did you hear that?
No. It's certainly... I mean, it didn't need to be repeated. But the only thing I wanted to know was yes or no, or any found. Are you keeping track?
Basically, he said that the contractor is keeping track. As far as he knows at the moment, there haven't been any notes of any copper or lead lines at the moment.
Copper, yes, no.
Copper, yes, no lead. I'm sorry.
No lead lines? Okay. That runs contrary to some information that I received. But anyway, that's another story. Um, the library status?
Library status. We have... This week, we have met numerous times regarding the moment that is idle on the job, and that's basically because of the fact that the contractor should have submitted shop drawings regarding the sprinkler water line, and they weren't submitted. When it was inspected, the inspectors felt that there were some things that they didn't like, and now they're insisting on seeing job... Shop drawings from the architect, engineer, and that's where we're at at this point.
As I recall, this is what was stated on a number of prior meetings also. And I mean, I go by there on my travels throughout the day, and I'll take a look, and there's nothing going on there. I think today there was a truck there for a little while. And if you recall, Mrs. Cornetto had written a letter, which you read out last week. And I mean, they live there. And Mr. Cornetto's retired, I know, and he sees what's going on. He didn't write the letter. She did, but they really see nothing going on. So it's a little disheartening, given the fact that it'll be two years in February for a project that probably should have taken twenty less than probably nine months.
Jeff, I hear you. Jeff, I...
COVID's been since last March. But, uh... So is there a completion requirement as far as the... Actually?
Well, normal conditions in a contract, there's liquid damage clauses. Normally. I don't see that there was any in this contract. But then if you add in the fact of what COVID did to the job, I think that would just take the liquid damage clause and eliminate it because of the epidemic. So we've got a couple of different things going on here, but the most important thing is that we're going to make sure it's done right, and nothing's going to come back negative. And that's where we are right now. We have to... We all have to be a little more patient, and I know how frustrating it is, because I am very frustrated.
Okay, one thing, and this is a legal question. You're saying there was no completion date?
If there was, it's not happening as... It's obvious that it's not happening.
Well, that I'm aware of, but I'm just saying completion dates are required in the contract.
Correct, but you also got to add in a COVID situation. Here.
Uh, the COVID-19 would be two years ago? I don't think so. It started in 2002.
Jeff, 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 I am not defending what's going on. I am under the same umbrella you are with frustration. We're trying to get it resolved, but get it resolved correct.
And I'm powerless except complaint. So it... I mean, that's all I can say. I mean, I... You understand, obviously, that it's well over the time. And
I do.
What I heard at last, the last statement was being made, that probably not until November, or maybe the first of the year. But I will belabor the point, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Scalcion?
Yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, thank you. Um, this is Dominic Scalcion, 120 East 54th Street. And I want to check back with you. I believe on the August 13 meeting, I spoke about the missing fence. And if I have my dates correctly, within a few days, that fence at English Avenue Park was installed. So, um, that, I just want to confirm that it was taken care of. My other que... My question tonight is regarding English Avenue Park. And while I don't want to go into too many details, there is vandalism at the children's playground and quite a bit of litter. And I recall some discussion of closed-circuit television. So I wanted to ask about that, particularly for this park, since it is remote, and there do seem to be some problems. So that is my question, whether or not there will be closed-circuit television cameras. And, um, will they be installed in the near future in this particular park? Thank you.
Part one, Mr. Feligno?
Mr. Scalcion, we're having a lot of problems in all of our parks of late. As you're aware, due to the COVID situation, there was no school. Kids are pent up, frustrated, aggression. They're not getting, I guess, their needs met, and they're out in the parks, and they're causing a lot of problems. It's not unique to English Ave. It's several parks in town. We're doing our best to stay ahead of it, to police the parks as best we can. We are inquiring whether we should put cameras in which parks that don't have them at this point. It's pretty costly, so we're trying to balance where they should be stationed right now. So it's on our radar. We're aware of the situation, and we're doing the best we can. Certainly, if you see something, say something. Please call the police desk if you see something going on there that shouldn't be going on.
And regarding just the basic aspect of people as far as keeping the area clean, there are some people out there that were obviously brought up wrong. They could be standing next to a trash barrel and throw their trash on the floor. That's not the majority of the people, but it certainly is a small majority. That will never stop. Anything further there? Anyone else care to speak? If not?
Mayor, I do have one comment to be read into the public records, submitted by Ms. Barbara Von Demhagen. It again is in relation to the library. However, I did say I would read it into the record, and she said, "Please address the issue of the Elmwood Park Public Library still being closed. Also, why has the work of the renovation been stopped? My property is adjacent to the library. There has been little to no work done on our library in weeks. Why? There is a full dumpster every so often. I will see a person add to the dumpster, but I rarely see people working at the site."
Well, I think we addressed that already. Hopefully, that lady was listening. I think I would be redundant to repeat myself. That is very frustrating what's going on with the library, and we are on it each and every day. I could tell you that. But we are not going to accept an inferior product. Anyone else care to speak? If not, I will close the public portion. Mrs. Delaney?
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda this evening, we have our engineer's report. With us, we have Ali from Alamo Group here to do a presentation. But before he does so, I do have a few items on the agenda. Under 1A, we have the proposal for design services for the Marina Park improvements, which was on another agenda previous meeting. And they did come down $26,000. And so now the proposal for design services is once again in front of you this evening.
Just for the edification of the public, Mayor and Council had thought that the fee was a little high, and Alamo did bring their number down to make it more what we seem to think was more reasonable, and we thank them for doing that. Ms. Delaney?
I just want to add a comment. It was you, the mayor, who questioned that, and thanks to that, you saved us $26,000. So kudos to you, because you were the one that questioned that.
Thank you, but we're a team here. I appreciate that, though.
Okay, so as long as there are no objections, it will be on for resolution on the 17th. Moving on to 1B, which is the IDA Site Work Services, Inc. Change Order Request.
Ali, please get right into that mic, because it's very difficult for the people out there, otherwise. Don't be bashful.
Okay. So in regards to the work completed by IDA, at this point, we have no reason to believe that there's anything missing or unsatisfactory. We are currently in the process of finalizing their payment. Their work was more than good, actually. We were happy to see that they completed above our expectations. And for that reason, we're hoping that we will be able to utilize them for multiple other projects going on in town, including parking lots and other... Another basketball court renovation project that we'll be doing on Elmwood Drive, hopefully.
This is the company that did Cherry Hill?
Yes.
Excellent company, by the way.
Yes.
Spot on.
Yeah.
Does that answer that, Erin?
So I'll just need Ali to approve payment, and then it will be done on a resolution, so...
Yeah. We'll have to submit a letter, basically approving the work finally, so that you guys can do the closeout. And since the project wasn't divided into line items, we'll just... There will be... There won't be necessity... There won't be a necessity for a breakdown of the items that are being paid. There'll just be one lump sum plus a change order.
So is the Mayor and Council okay with this being on the September 17 meeting, so long as we get that from Alamo?
All in agreement?
Yes.
Forgot about you, Frank.
No, Frank, don't hear.
Okay, moving on to 1C, which is in regards to the Memorial High School tennis courts. Just as an FYI, as attached to the paperwork, there is only about $8,000 left on the bond. Ms. Keating of Finance wanted to put that on our radar. And then also, I know Ali had sent an email regarding this project and final payment. I don't know if there's anything that you want to make note of that?
Thank you. So at this point, the tennis courts have, for the most part, been completed in the way that was satisfactory to the town. Not that the project is completed. There is still a final coating that needs to be applied, which at this point is set to be applied on the week of the 14th. This is simply due to letting the asphalt cure before they put the final coating, as a necessity. But on that note, the contractor did agree to completely repave the tennis courts. I know an extra cost to the town. Not that the town should have that responsibility, but just to say that the contractor did his due diligence in completing the project in the way that was satisfactory and taking responsibility for his work. On that note, it has come to agreement by Mayor, Administrator, and myself that the tennis courts can proceed to the final coating, and therefore, once completed, closeout. I believe this will also be something that the Council is voting on. But on that note, there are no further issues that we are aware of.
Ali, the extra costs here, could you substantiate them, please?
You're saying what was the extra cost of the contractor incurred?
Yeah, why are we missing the finish line in terms of dollars and cents?
Uh, like, why are we not completed entirely?
No.
So basically, I think... I think... Yeah, so there's $8,000... There's $8,000 left on the bond, so Ms. Keating just wanted to let everyone know that. Ali just said that the contractor is not charging anything extra for the additional work. However, Alamo on our paperwork did go over their amount by about $300.
So in regards to that, yeah, that I will address. This is something that we have had to routinely come back to the tennis courts in the interest of getting the project done, finished in adequacy with what the town's standards are. On one hand... On one hand, we do want to see if we can finish the project without going over our original budget amount. I did send out an email saying that due to me having to bring in additional workers for inspection purposes, as well to ensure that the tennis court did actually get completed adequately, as opposed to having another repeat of the last pavement. There... Though I can control my billing, I can't necessarily control theirs. So that was the point of that warning. Anything past that may be out of my hand. Obviously, the town has the right to... Has the right to refuse what they believe is not worthy, you know, is not... Is not payment justified. But the idea is simply that we did go over and further than what was in my hands.
Okay. But based on the fact that we've had all these problems, I don't think it's fair that we should be charged for the problems that we did not create. I think, as a contractor, when you make a mistake, you have to own up to it, and maybe your profit margins change because of that. So I think all parties in concern should also bite the bullet. And I'd appreciate if any charges that are directed towards the problems that we had are eliminated.
Okay, the request is noted, and well, we will hold a discussion to see if we can make that possible for you. As we do enjoy our relationship with the town, we feel like we have a very good working relationship.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
So at this time, it's your wish to not increase the amount for this project? Not just with the contractor, but also Alamo?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that all in agreement on that, Daniel?
Mayor, I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Ali, what's the... Do you have something, Sal?
Yeah. Go ahead. I'm concerned about the fairness, Mayor, of what the request was. And I'm going to legal...
Sal, can you use your mic? Sorry.
In a legal sense, it seems harsh if the request is to have the Alamo Group give up any fees that would do them as a result of the extra work. Normally, it is the contractor who will pick up the expense. And I can't see why, under the circumstances, because it was the contractor who actually did not complete the job accordingly. Had the contractor completed the job accordingly, the Alamo Group would not have had to go through any other expenses.
I agree with your bill law.
Can I say something, Mayor? So we incurred possibly additional engineering costs from our engineer for this project because the contractor made some errors in the way he paved the lot. Those should be picked up by the contractor, right? There's no other cost for the paving, so there's $8,000 remaining on the bond. We don't need to increase anything. We're good. We're... Everything is paid for. But we may get a bigger break if we ask Alamo to talk to Zakaro about eating the cost of the engineering that was above and beyond what it should have been.
Do you have a number on that, what Mike is referring to?
Oh, you mean a final number from Alamo?
No, the extra because of the circumstances.
Yeah.
Right now, Alamo's only over $280-something dollars. That's what's in front of you on 1C.
Just to put this in perspective, that's like two hours, if I'm not mistaken.
$281.68 over our resolution for, you know, designs and...
Hold on, Daniel. I do realize that, but that's not the taxpayers' fault.
I understand.
So if you can get the contractor and get him to agree to pay you that, it would be appreciated. Daniel, you had something to say?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ali, what's the... What's the completion date of this project?
For the tennis courts?
Yes.
The week of the 14th, they should be doing the final coating. We don't have a specific date, but all we know is that should complete it once the coating is finished. They should be repairing the fence before that.
And once they coat, like, how many... What's the period that it has to sit there and untouched?
I believe... I don't remember the exact date, but I believe we might be waiting about a week after that to make sure that the thing, possibly less, but I would say a week. Just play it safe.
So I can comfortably tell people that by the end of September, those courts will be ready to roll?
Yes.
Okay. Just going back to this issue, we're $280-something dollars over, like, the design proposal that the Mayor and Council passed at one point, right?
Yeah, the full ship, like, design, construction.
Right, so if that number was 100, we're at 100,281, essentially. And does that reflect the totality of all these other inspectors that you had to bring in and everything, or is there still more to come?
I'm not sure if there is additional billing. Like I said, the... Some of these billings would be coming from someone who is not myself. I do not know what they've billed and for what duration. There's obviously multiple aspects of whether we fill the conditions, the inspection reports, going back and uploading photos. I don't have the full number yet, but as soon as we figure out, we will update you guys.
When this was paved the first time and went out there and flooded and everything, would Alamo have approved that? Like, was that up to par with what you guys sketched out?
No, the plans were actually very stringent, and even more so than what is required by tennis courts necessarily. To be honest, our plans may have been so stringent to a point where the contractor may not have been able to fully achieve them, because he would have had to have a near-perfect slope in order to meet the elevation points. So at that point, we wouldn't have approved it simply because of the puddling, which was not just a large quantity of the court, but a certain depth. Those are requirements that are... Those are requirements that are standard among any tennis court, so we would not have been able to approve that.
And you... I mean, you guys will have to be out there when they do the final coating and when you finally sign off that this is done, right?
Correct.
So that... This number will inevitably grow, because you're not done.
Not necessarily, because I can be the one who's out there, as opposed to getting other people to also... Because in this situation, there's not a lot of room for error. The coating, at worst, could be... The lines couldn't be straight. So it's something that I don't have any issue with handling on my own. But due to the importance of the tennis courts at the time, being done right that second time, not having to come back and say, "Do it a third time", this is why we decided to make that movement of including constant supervision and, you know, constant supervision, as well as from multiple angles. Anybody who catches anything, we did make them measure pretty much every 10 feet just to make sure that their elevations were good.
I mean, Mayor, if this was like thousands, I would, you know, be more upset about it. I think what I would do is, Ali has plenty of information. You take it to your people at Alamo. If you choose to say, you know, we're... You know, you owe us 281. I would have no problem with that. If you also came back and said, "Hey, you know, we're good", I would have no problem with that also. So I would leave it in your hands.
Okay.
Your hands, meaning the company.
Absolutely. I'll do my best.
I object, Counselor. I think the $280-something dollars is miniscule. However, there's a principle here, and I don't think the taxpayers should pay one dime extra. So that's... That would be my position on this. But I do understand what he's saying. I'd love to agree with him, but I can't.
I think we'll get to the same spot, though.
I hope so.
I think so.
Okay, so at this time, as far as I understand it, we will not be increasing Alamo's resolution. Okay. Moving on to 1D, it's the stormwater control ordinance that our borough attorney drafted and submitted to Alamo Group. Just putting it, knowing that you would be here tonight, back on the radar. You guys may need more time. I know it's very lengthy.
We have reviewed it at this point, and we actually do not have any... We do not have any comments as far as anything we would like to change. A lot of the verbiage is something that is standard, and we've seen in many other towns. So we're comfortable that it meets all requirements.
Okay, great. So we'll put it on introduction then for September 17.
Yes.
Thank you. And then I will turn it over to you for your monthly status report, and then your presentation.
Thank you. So there are some projects, which is really anything in regards to the county, that we are not going to address. For the most part, they do... Even though we have contacted the county to get updates, and that is the extent of the updates from the status reports, there's no physical... There's no physical updates. There's no news other than just communication. So things like the head wall at the intersection of Linwood Avenue and River Drive will not be addressed right now. That being said, I will move to the projects that do have merit for Rosemont Park improvements. We are awaiting the final equipment installation. Some equipment has not yet arrived. This is due to the fact that they still need to pour a concrete pad to hold some of the equipment that's arriving. In the past, we have had an issue with the transport, and for that reason, we don't want to transport it any more than we have to. So we are awaiting a date. Me and Scott Card of the DCO and Michael Fulley are awaiting a date for them to install the pads necessary to hold the equipment, and therefore then deliver the equipment. Other than that, the basketball court portion of that project is complete and done satisfactorily by IDA. For the Memorial High School tennis courts, I believe we kind of just addressed that. The project is substantially complete minus the final coating, in which case that is supposed to take place the week of the 14th. They would do it early if they could, but they do need to allow the asphalt time to cure after it's been recently laid. And then by the end of the month, we can reasonably say that it will be open for COVID-free play.
Ali, is that coating... Is that a water-based product that they're going to be putting on? The finish coat?
It should be a latex product.
A latex?
Yes.
What you got to watch there is the temperatures get too low.
True. That is actually absolutely true. We do need to have the coating at a certain temperature. I don't remember the temperature, but...
Probably 50-plus.
Yeah, even at night temperature, it would have to be above, so...
Okay, keep your eye on that.
Definitely. The Bergen County Community Development Block Grant Project 2018 has been completed. I believe that has been for a while. At this point, we'll probably be removing it from the status reports unless anybody has any complaints on that project. First, Second, Third, and Summit Street. Okay, I just wanted to check. Improvements to Moll Boulevard Phase 3. Due to the fact that PSENG is only currently recommencing their work, they have significant delays in completion, completing their work throughout the town, this particular section of Moll Boulevard, though we would like to have them complete immediately, they cannot do until the rest of the town is completed, simply because this line is where they will finally charge the gas mains, and they need to have everything else completed before they can do that. For that reason, we are expecting them to actually be able to complete work in this area sometime next year. We held a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and we've come to the agreement that they can start the project, but only do the concrete work, which obviously will not interfere with the services that they have yet to adjust, or replace. However, once PSENG has completed work, hopefully by next year, or should be by next year, then he can continue doing the paving, and he has agreed to hold his prices, obviously not asphalt prior fuel price adjustment, because by definition, those change, and that's why they're included in the contract. Improvements to Moll Boulevard Phase 4. We have established a construction cost estimate for what is a rescope going from the rec center to Veterans Place. Originally, this project was going to just be paving, but due to the market and Moll intersection project that the county did, the road is essentially paved in the section which we had a DOT grant. For that reason, we have decided to repurpose the grant to a streetscape, improving sidewalk, lighting, pavers potentially, et cetera. The construction cost estimate comes out to approximately 250,000, and the grant cost, the grant cover is about 207,000. This does obviously fall in very close. We can make adjustments to get it back down to the number, which is the grant amount, but this would be determinant on if we want to make some changes. We would need to have, hold, have a resolution with the town approving the change before we can submit to the DOT our new construction cost estimate, and luckily, the location is essentially still the same, so that will not change.
Ali?
Yes?
In order to save the $43,000, what would we have to back out?
So, interestingly enough, 21,000 of this 250,000 is in 10% contingency cost, which is standard to apply to a project when you apply, just so that way, in case something happens, you know, that you have money to back you up. And then, at the same time, 30,000 of that is eligible construction cost inspection. So, reasonably what I'm trying to say here is that the project could very well be actually at the 207,000 excluding those items, but, you know, we're trying to get the most money possible, so these items may be eligible under being paid for the grant, but the construction cost itself may actually be closer to 207,000. If you wanted to play it safe, we could just start removing items. If you removed all the lighting, you would subtract 50,000 from the project.
So, so basically, what you're saying is if we take into consideration the contingency and if we back out your fee and you work for nothing, we'll get to that goal?
That is one way of doing it. This is the, this is the current rough estimate that I have here, yes. Pass it around, absolutely.
No, we can't do that to him. We're not talking about 282 dollars here. So, Council, on that note, I don't think we should compromise the project.
Mayor, can I give you my thoughts?
Sure, absolutely.
We just applied, Ali, right, for a different section, for a streetscape-type project from around the Boulevard Bar and Grill, from there all the way to Phillip, somewhere around there, for about half a million dollars. We don't know how much we're going to get, right? And we're trying to rescope a previous grant to cover this other section. Right? So, first question, are we in touch with DOT, like that we're actively doing this?
Yes and no. We are definitely in touch with the DOT, but even on the best of days, they were hard to get in touch with.
Because this is, this is an older grant. This is like 2018, which is why that worries me, because there's usually a two-year period to get...
Things completed or changed. Yes, we are in contact with the DOT. Unfortunately, they are, on the best of days, not responsive. They aren't even fully working back from their offices from COVID. I have already sent emails in regards to various other DOT projects, requesting simple things like updates, and they do not get back to me. And when they do get back to me, it's a sound that means that they're going to need a lot more time to get back to me. So, we can submit. We do have some contacts in the DOT who we can allow to try to move things a little bit faster. So, that is something that I can offer up to you as consolation.
So, that's important, because all this is for nothing if we have an issue with them, right? But my other thought is, if you recall when we did the estimate from Phase 2, or whatever you want to call it, from Linden to Phillip, we removed decorative pavers, removed sidewalks, in favor of running the conduit under the grass.
Correct.
So basically, what we would have is the conduit, the light poles, and then maybe some decorative around the actual lights, but we didn't want to rip out all the grass on the Boulevard and just make it pavers, because we wanted that green effect.
Absolutely.
But I see your estimate here has the pavers and the sidewalk.
Correct.
So I think we should be consistent throughout. So if you did take that approach, then you do take $45,000 out of this, because you have 22,000 for concrete sidewalk and 20 grand for concrete pavers, which if you go through conduit, for the most part, you wouldn't need most of that. Uh, go under the grass, I'm sorry. Conduit under the grass.
Yeah, correct. So you would only have to replace aprons. You wouldn't necessarily have to put in pavers. Take consideration the difference in this particular rescope versus what we applied for newly is, in the newest application, the sky was the limit. We basically could go as far as the money would take us. There was, right now, we are working within limits of what are existing projects that have already been completed. So if we do remove the pavers, like for example, as you said, that would bring us down to the 200,000, which is what the mayor wants.
Well, we should be consistent the whole length of the Boulevard, is what I'm saying. And that would bring you down. But my final point is that we have this grant and, you know, rescoping it, and we're seeking more money. I think that when all is said and done, we hear how much we got for the second phase that we just applied for, then we would bid this one project as one thing, as one big project, not in phases. So the grants will kind of lump in together and cover like this large portion of the Boulevard, and I guess we would see how much every extra block would cost us, and we'd have to cut it off at some point. So I don't think it's like the biggest deal right now for a little bit over, because I think it's going to have to be bid as one big chunk for this to make any sense.
Now, Daniel, in that scenario, the only item that would be in question, based on what you're saying, would be the brick pavers.
Right. So, so we took the approach on the Boulevard past, you know, by the bar there going north, that, you know, you would, you'd take a lot of green out if you just made everything pavers, and you would get half as far with the lights. And I think the lights is what the effect we're going for.
Okay. So now, how about in front of the rec building? You got, you have a wide green area to the curb.
Right.
Would that be brick pavers, or is that...
I say no. I say wherever we have grass, maintain the grass. We will have, in the actual, directly in front of the rec, I think it's all pavers.
They are currently pavers.
So, you'd probably have to redo those or whatever. But my, my point is that wherever there is grass, go under the grass and replace the grass, because keeping the green effect is, I think, is important. And I think would bring down the cost of your estimate if you took that, that guidance.
Yeah, it would definitely be...
By something.
Yeah, so it would definitely bring down the cost of the estimate, and we can certainly do that. Just obviously, since there is currently pavers by the rec center and north there is green, eventually, we're going to have a transition location where either it's going to turn from pavers to grass. It's just a matter of choosing location. Obviously, if we remove the pavers here, it brings down the cost of the construction to where you want it to be, and in which case, we'll be consistent all throughout grants going north from this section.
Okay. So then it's, it's practical.
Right. But most importantly, so the procedure is that we need a resolution asking for the rescope based on this?
Yes, we do. And I can give you guys the adjusted construction cost estimates that you can...
Can we vote on that in September, please?
Yes. I mean, I don't know.
No, I, you know, like...
I would need all the information by the, sorry, 14th.
Okay.
Because that way, if they approve that, and we should know in like October, November, what the other grant was, we can be ready to rock and roll, or at least know our numbers.
Yeah.
If we're still like, you know, not have this lingering, then we're going to fall behind. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The resolution will be...
Simply approving the scope change.
Anything to do with...
I don't know, because all I have to do is vote on it and then send the DOT for their approval.
Okay.
Okay. Next item of relevance to the Cherry Hill ADA Playground, the, as also done by IDA, the work is considered satisfactory. The project is not yet complete, because we still need to be putting up a fence around the playground that was part of the original project scope, not for this contractor, but to complete the whole project. I do believe we also wanted to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony where we can open it to the public, but in that sense, we do want to make sure that the fence is installed. We are still waiting on the date when the playground manufacturer installer will be doing that, and we'll keep you updated. For the Veterans Memorial Van Riper Moll Boulevard Park? Oh, so, oh yeah, so the dog park, that was essentially by the, was on River Drive by the Garden State Parkway. We have essentially stopped work on this project for two main reasons. One, because of the potential to change the location, and two, because we are still currently waiting on a meeting with the Garden State Parkway contractor who will be doing the work they will be adjusting the road with. And so, on one hand, we could potentially do some work now if we decide to keep this location, but in particular, the parking lot might end up being partially moved back or destroyed if we were to do the work before them, since they are widening the road. So, that's why that has stopped at this point. And again, there had the talks about potentially relocating, so we don't want to proceed until we know exactly. You're welcome. So for the Veterans Memorial Park at Van Riper and Moll Boulevard, I do have some 3D renderings, which I will also pass out if that is okay.
That's not the actual statue. That's a statue of John Wayne.
Remember how we were going to call this Caleri Park?
They did stuff Trigger though. Trigger is actually in the museum, right, Sal? I mean, we're the only ones that remember that.
He's stuffed.
He's stuffed, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know about Dale.
Ali?
Yes?
You see this breakdown?
Yes.
Can we get one in regarding to this?
Oh, for the...
Line items?
Yes.
All right, this way, I do know that Scott's going to do the water tap, he's going to bring it to the curb, and then we're going to have to get an irrigation specialist. But some items that, line item with their cost, and anywhere we can do it ourselves, naturally, but we would need that.
Yeah, definitely. We do have an existing construction co, it might not be fully updated with all the items, but we do have one, I just didn't bring it with me. For this particular project, obviously, I think we all know that the idea here is to do this through donations if possible, including...
That's our goal.
That's our goal, exactly. Basically, another thing that the town will be able to get, but without using taxpayer dollars. And obviously, it is Veterans Memorial. The intention is for it to be to the soldiers of Vietnam. The statue in the center is not the statue that we are trying to put in that park, but I have limits on what I can actually, I have to use pre-existing 3D models to make these things, and I could not find one that was similar, so I went with the horse.
John Wayne.
Exactly.
John Wayne on a horse. It was rethought, and they, they felt that the benches would be...
Yeah, so in regards, yeah, to the benches, I mean, some of these items, such as benches, are easy to take in and out. It definitely looked better in the rendering with the benches, and I, that was, you know, a lot of that is for the aesthetic, because when people see what this could look like, and if you see how, how, how nice it looks, or how people can appreciate it, that's when they may be more likely to donate. But we could certainly remove things that are not liked, but this one is purely aesthetic, to be honest with you.
Okay, the only problem I have is where's people going to park to go to these benches? Because remember, this, they have to be walking, right?
Yeah.
Because you cannot park anyplace around here.
You can park up the street, past the brick pavers.
Past these?
Yeah, there's, that's parking on that side?
There is a parking lot. I don't know if it's private or public.
No, it was a local place there.
There was a park there, but it's probably mostly for walkers.
Did you think walkers?
Benches that people don't sit on, and it just makes it look nice.
You see a traffic problem there with the benches, commuting?
Here, here's my question. I think it's the million-dollar question. Does that land belong to the Borough of Elmwood Park? Because I don't think it does.
So...
When I, when I look at the...
We did look it up.
It does, belongs to the borough?
As far as we know, it is in the borough right-of-way. The only question is how far the extents of the railroad goes, but we believe, I mean, we, we don't believe that it's significant enough to encroach on the park.
So, I, there's just a website that I use to look at, like, it's called NJ Parcels. It's like the overlay of the tax map onto satellite, and the satellite shows me that basically whatever business is to the east of this park, their, their lot kind of extends around like a horseshoe.
So, yeah.
That could be wrong, could be laid out wrong, but like, that's important.
Yeah. This is something that perhaps we can, we can look at again.
Because the map is pretty accurate with all other parcels that the Borough of Elmwood Park owns throughout the borough. And this one has like a horseshoe, and then there's the railroad, and then just that horseshoe of that tax lot, so.
Yeah. So, we can look into this further again with that particular website. We based this off of the tax maps, which obviously has...
There's a difference between right-of-way and the borough owning land.
That is true.
Right, this, this is like more than the right-of-way. This is like into...
But that being said, if something is, yeah, just because it's in the right-of-way doesn't mean that the borough owns it. But at the same time, if something is in the right-of-way, if something is past the right-of-way, it isn't something that is usually something that is sellable to a property. They may be able to maintain it, but the town reserves the right to put, say, sidewalk there, or they have the right to a curb, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
The only structure we're talking about here is a footing for the pedestal. Other than that, it's all mobile, and it's greenery, brick pavers.
I agree. I'm just saying, make sure we're not building on someone else's property, because that's essentially what I see here.
Yeah.
Because we don't own any land there.
I think this looks very nice, and I like the benches too, because I think what you're saying is true, Doris. I think people will be walking by, taking their walks at night or whatever, and it's a nice place, you know, to stop a little bit and, you know, and it looks very neat and clean, and I think it looks good, in my opinion.
Sal, correct me, Sal, correct me if I'm wrong. To Daniel's point, if it was an easement, if we, and, well, if it's an easement, we have the easement, we've...
It all depends on how it's classified. If it's a right-of-way, then the town has the right to do what it wants with it. If it's an easement where the adjacent property has a right to it, but the borough owns it, then there's a problem, because you may be encroaching upon any kind of easement that the adjoining property has.
Now, the joint...
So there should be, there should be technically, I would strongly recommend that you look at the tax map again, and if you're, if there's an issue that potentially that Councilman Galback just raised, which is concerning, you wouldn't want to build or do anything on a piece of property that you don't have the right to do anything on. So, I would turn around and say quickly, we could do a title search, and if I get a lot in description and from you, we can, I can call the title company and have them certify to us that in fact, we own it, the town owns it, or it's a, either right-of-way, or it's a...
Well, if it's owned, it would be owned by that plant, that paint factory that was there, correct?
If it is owned, most likely.
Right. Now, which, where is that legally now, in terms of the deed?
In this situation, let's say that it is owned by another entity. There is always the possibility of acquisition of it. Clearly, they don't use it. In fact, a, a, tell recently, it's been essentially used as a political staging point for signs. In fact, a hotel recently has been essentially used as a political staging point for signs. So, on that note, that is always an option as well, considering that this project is all about donations, and they don't clearly use it for anything, and it just would be a maintenance aspect for them. It is possible that even if they do, the town may still be able to proceed with this project. That being said, like I said, perhaps the tax map do need to be updated, that does happen. Finding the block and lot might be difficult, because they... I don't believe that location is a part of one. That's what the tax maps are showing us. But any reason to believe that it might be owned by someone else obviously has to be examined, so I will coordinate with Councilman Galback to see...
Block 1401, Lot 1, that's the... That's the...
I don't think...
I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't think there's anything in this particular town that is not designated either a lot, block, or lot, or some sort of...
Unless it's considered part of the roadway.
As a matter of fact, there's another scenario where we have a matter coming up later on that there's a lawsuit trying to obtain right-of-way to a swell, or an area which is nowhere, no one owns. So, it could be a similar situation, where instead, the town can actually take access of it or take possession of it. It's just a matter of doing a search that we would really be able to be standing on right grounds to whatever we do prior to it. If it is owned by the adjacent property owner, I mean, they could be approached and say, "Look, would you donate this portion?", and they can just get it... We can get a subdivision done.
Okay, now, here, to that point, and that's where I wanted to get. That property has been a nightmare for the last 20 years I've been here. We don't... Can't find the owner. Brown Fields was going... Came in and did some of the cleanup there. That was authorized, I guess, through us. So, if in fact, after you do a study on the deed and the parameters, it is part of that entity, then at that point, we need to know what do we do with this situation that's been going on for 20 years?
I mean, I would strongly, again, let me and the engineer work on this. I will do a search on it as much as I can, see exactly what the background is, the whole story. And if we have to, then you know what? There's a lot of things we can do as a council. You can start condomination proceedings, you can take it over by all sorts of means if you want to. There are avenues that you can take, but you want to take the right steps.
Absolutely.
All right?
Absolutely.
Mayor, I love the idea, I just... It's not 100% clear at best, you know, what the situation... I think that's point one, to get that straightened out, that's my whole point.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
If I can, I did have one concern with this park. There is... That's a high traffic area, there's a lot of trucks coming out of there. Maybe on the end, like toward where that, um... Crosswalk there is, behind the benches, they would put something to maybe, you know, like, I guess they have the boulders that stop, maybe if a car was to drive up there, and a pedestrian was standing there, it could cause some problems for us.
Okay, so, yeah, the safety concerns are, you know, something that we would like to examine due to the fact that it's a corner exposed to a curve, which obviously a car that loses control could, you know, could potentially run into that park. In which case, what you're describing as far as putting up bollards would definitely be an option to mitigate that. There are definitely decorative bollards that also serve as functional bollards, which could be placed there just to protect the monument as well as anybody who might be there. That is not currently included in, you know, are any construction costs, but it's not something that would be very hard to add either.
Yeah, I think it's necessary if we're going to do anything there, because, you know, being around there a lot, there's trucks that go on that curb all the time. So, I think it's necessary, if we're going to do anything there, we need those.
Thank you.
So, the building inspector and I did look into that, who owned that property, and it was not the borough. I don't recall off the top of my head who owned it, but I can follow up with the tax office tomorrow if we...
The paint factory you're talking about?
Talking about that triangle, the borough did not own it.
Oh, okay.
No.
We're talking about this project's triangle?
Right.
We don't own it?
No. According to the tax maps that we looked at, we didn't own it. Yes.
Well, we need to find out who owns it.
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor, so then, my point is very important, then. We do have to run a search on it and see exactly who owns it. And once you run a search on it, we can get the title company to certify it. So, they'll be hanging on if there's any issues.
Okay. Any other questions on this, so we move along? Okay, guys, it's all in your hands now.
For the 2019 Road Program, that project is also essentially complete. They are finalizing some last minute... Or not last minute, some last issues that we had to mitigate for pretty much just punchless items from sprinkler systems, which was a routine one, to just, you know, cracks in concrete. Those final items are being addressed, and we are coming to agreements on them. However, if anybody has any issues with the 2019 Road Program, other than the one drainage issue which is going to be addressed in the drainage project, the townwide drainage project, they would want to let me know. That way, if not, we could close out that project and hopefully have them for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to Tuwella Avenue. This one is actually... Has a lot of things we need to discuss. The project is essentially 40% complete, and the water main... The water main itself is complete. At this point, we are looking towards what we're planning to do for the sidewalk. The project itself already has the full amount of curb being replaced, because we're going to be paving the road, and once we've paved, it would be... It would be basically impossible to replace curb with anyone, whether it be the resident or the town, without then damaging the roadway again. So, the curb is being replaced in its entirety, but there is a question of the sidewalk. Previously, when we originally started this project, we focused on areas that were particularly, you know, tripping hazards, so far damaged that even replacing the aprons, which we would have to do because of the curb, the sidewalk is likely to also get damaged to places where, say, aprons are kind of merged with the sidewalk, in which case, obviously, you can't just replace half of it. So, originally, the sidewalk that was set to be replaced was just in these locations, which we determined beforehand. At this point, though, before we do pull the trigger, we realized that it might be something worth looking into if the town wants to potentially do all the sidewalk, or only focus on areas which is the ADA ramps. This being because technically, it is the homeowner's responsibility to maintain the right-of-way, including the sidewalk, to make sure that there are no tripping hazards, to make sure that their sidewalk is in good condition. So, that being said, if we did want to complete the rest of the sidewalk in this project, we would be looking at an additional $112,880. Obviously, this is not a perfect number, because, and we're talking about a quantity of concrete, but the current project is essentially 937... Actually, I have a paper here somewhere that had that. Ah, here it is. The current project total, or at least the original contract total, was $937,130.85. Currently, we've already had reductions with the water main, things that we didn't need, which saved the town money, and we've had some additions in other regards, such as trees that ended up needing to be removed, as well as soil that was found to be contaminated with certain metals and therefore had to be removed from the site. At this point, our understanding is that we're only $7,000 over what the original contract amount was. So, that puts us to $944,000. And with the additional $112,000, if they wanted to do the sidewalk, would put us at approximately, I believe, 15%, somewhere around there, but within the change order limits. So, I don't know if we want to make a decision here and now, but it is something that the council should consider for a decision whether or not they want to proceed to do all sidewalk on the street.
Yeah, I think we should discuss that. What I think your concerns are, once you do the apron, the sidewalks are so badly in front of that apron, new apron, that you... If you follow the elevation of the sidewalk, you're going to be putting an apron in like that.
Yes, correct.
And then you have to worry about those two blocks, or three blocks of concrete sidewalk, matching into the balance of the sidewalks there.
Correct.
So that there's not a tripping hazard.
Correct, as well as the fact that there are existing tripping hazards, and some sidewalk is in such bad condition that, like I said, to replace an apron, there is a good chance that the contractor would unavoidably damage sidewalk, which is already damaged. But, you know, people will definitely come out and say they want it replaced anyway. So, we took a proactive measure in putting this in the contract, simply because we want to have that money already bonded, as opposed to have to deal with it after the fact.
Okay. Now, here's the dilemma, council. I could see correcting the couple of blocks of concrete sidewalk in front of the apron and correcting the curbs. But once we start doing the entire sidewalk, we're going to set a precedent, and every block we do going forward is going to be curb, aprons, and sidewalks, which would narrow down how much we can get accomplished. Say if we budget 500,000, a million, whatever we budget. So, what... My opinion would be you do what you have to do not to create a tripping hazard, and we live with the rest of it, not to set that precedent of putting in complete sidewalks.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, I want the council to...
Of course.
To dwell on it.
I would stay out of the sidewalk business as much as we can.
But we can't handcuff him in front of the driveway. We can't do that, so...
Well, again, safety and just to make it smooth, 100%, but when we just get into aesthetics and doing the whole thing, that's not the right move.
So, how about anything we disturb as part of the project we were on the hook for?
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's do it that way, Ali.
In which case, we will definitely be doing certain sidewalk sections in the areas where trees be removed, because as you said, disturbed, so it won't just be aprons, but I understand your light of thinking.
Yeah, and if you've got a situation where you take a tree out, you deroot it, so there's two blocks there you have to repair, then there's one block that you're not going to touch, and then there's three blocks in front of the apron, naturally, you would do that one block too.
Yes.
To keep conformity, and otherwise, you'll drive the contractor crazy with the elevations.
Yeah, it would be difficult for him to keep having to...
So, there's a lot of judgment on your part. But you understand what the sentiment of this council is, is we're not in the sidewalk business.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I like that. What are we selling, pizzas here?
Okay, so that addresses that issue. Moving on to the next is the Municipal Marina Park Improvements. At this point, we have received letters from Green Acres, and we have already started working, and by we, I mean environmental departments, already started working on the required submissions for this project. We are going to definitely avoid the situation that we experienced, which is Birchwood. That project, obviously, I don't know... I don't recall if you were mayor at the time when this project was taking place, but it's essentially a residual project. It's a park that also was under Green Acres, and they... They were... We were not involved in the beginning, and later became involved in the project, at least as far as construction design and management. So, we want to make sure that all those things are taken care of early, and everything is... All paperwork is in order.
Is the Army Corps of Engineers involved in this?
Army Corps of Engineers?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, they could be, but not at this point.
Because that was always a stickling point.
I think you mean for Marina, you're talking about...
For Marina.
For the Marina.
Yeah.
As far as we know at this point, it would just be the DEP and the town, and, I mean, the county does board it, but we're trying to stay out of their right-of-way, so I guess that is possible that they could be involved, since they do very much control a lot of waterways. But usually, I don't know if the Passaic River... I guess it might be.
If I may, Mayor, I think they would actually be involved with there's an EBSN tide. I believe with the Marina is there's... That is not an EBSN tide type of scenario. I think there's the dam further down that prevents the backflow of water.
Title waters.
Yeah, so there's no tidal waters that would give potentially jurisdiction to the Army Corps of Engineers.
I mean, don't go looking for trouble, but... You know, just because we don't want that to kick back.
Yeah, of course. The next is the 2019 CDVG Project Improvements to Donate Echo. If I'm not mistaken, the project is awarded.
Yeah, so for 17 and 18, both have been awarded to AJM Contractors, Inc., and we actually sent out the contracts and asked that they return an original to us and also directly to you, Ali.
Okay, and they haven't at this point, correct? Not to you guys, anyway? Because I don't believe I've seen it yet.
I'm sorry?
They haven't returned it yet?
No.
Okay. Okay. The next item on the list is the Borough-Wide Drainage Improvements Project. There are multiple items on this list, and I was... It's up to the council to determine which ones they want to remediate. There are certain ones that are strongly recommended to be dealt with. But that being said, there are actually a couple that have been resolved since creating that list, and then...
I think what we want to do is get them all out as one project.
Correct. But there's two locations which have been resolved since creating that, which is 7173 Cadmus and Mola and Garvey. Those locations have been already solved by... Through the DPW doing work there. That being said, another item is to be added, which is marginal roll. A marginal road outfall has essentially collapsed, and that one is a good idea to be added to the project. So, there's some that have been resolved by the DPW, and then there's another one to be added. So, you know, this is something that can be added as we go along, but at the very least, we should approve or deny the ones that are currently on the list. We definitely need to do the outfall.
Well, to Mike's point, didn't we agree that we're going to do it in one bid? And we're allocating...
Do them all.
Do them all, and...
Yeah.
So...
We're looking at about $300,000 to do them all. Obviously, this is a rough number. We have to do surveys to know what can be done with swales, what can be done with pipes, et cetera. But, I mean, our rough estimation at this point, without, you know, actually setting up a project officially, is at about $300,000.
So, I guess my question is, this year, we didn't allocate any funds for paving. Am I correct with that? For paving? Are we repaving program? No, right?
We didn't do them this year, not yet.
Okay, so, in lieu of the repavement program, I think we should move on this, in my opinion? Instead of...
The dollars aren't the same level.
$300,000?
$300,000 for the... Yeah, there's approximately 17 locations, and one of them is a collapsed outfall. This also does involve a contingency, so just like in the situation of the Mola Boulevard section, it could be less. But the large issues are basically assuming we have to install pipe underground to get to other locations, so existing inlet structures. So, that's where a lot of these costs come from, and pipe is not cheap.
Now, if a road... If a road were to be repaved at the same time while you did this kind of improvement, that would be more cost-efficient, right?
That would be more cost-efficient in the areas where swales are an effective strategy, which could be some of them, this is why we need the survey.
But just in general, if there's other work being done, it would just be more efficient. I would say as a starting point, Mayor, identifying these locations and seeing if any of these locations also coincide with streets that are on the brink of being on the paving list. You get what I'm saying?
Valid point.
And that way, maybe we could make a little bit of a package of this thing, as opposed to just sending them out randomly.
Yeah, currently, any streets that we do believe, have a reason to believe are going to be paved, like those drainage issues, if there are drainage issues on the streets, have not been included on the list. Or if they have, there might be a note saying that we have a reasonable PSNG, say, for example, is going to solve it, or this road's streetscape project is going to solve it. There might be a couple of those, but we did take that into consideration. But there might be additional roads coming that we are going to be doing, that we haven't decided on, which could alleviate these problems.
Do you have this... I'm sorry, do you have this plotted out on a map?
I do not, just a...
Just like the...
Yeah, just intersection and cost, but I can put it on a CAD map for you guys.
If you could do... If you could, whatever, just send that information over. I think that's the way to make it make sense, because to spend 350... Because to spend 350, 400,000 and tell the community we just, we went out to a bunch of, you know, I don't know.
What it's doing is cleaning up, bad choice of words, are some sins. And I think that with all the paving we've done, we're doing a nice job with the curbs. We clean up these water drainage problems, that makes us whole for the moment. Nice and clean and whole, that's, so even if we forego the, the repaving program, I think we're in good shape to do that and put the dollars towards this and start fresh next year on, on the paving, repaving program. It's my opinion.
Okay, so.
Can you, can you plot those?
Yeah, well, we can.
Maybe we can kill a few birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Or something else.
Make sure that one on Washington.
That is one of the priority ones, that has to be, has to be solved.
Whereas we're going to look like that, the backside of this.
I see. Okay, moving on to the next relevant item, actually, to be honest, the, I mean, we have things like stormwater pollution prevention and stormwater management plan updates, those are not imminent, though we do technically have to do them every single year for the DEP. Something that I would work with on SCOT, but again, that, there, we have satisfied the requirements and so are our intentions for this year. So it's something that has to be done by next year. Borough police station, at this point, we are not currently doing anything further until instructed. PSCNG gas main, we've had definitely, as issues pop up, we do still have to deal with them. There are definitely a fair share of issues from stuff that they do. The most recent, or the one that actually I wanted to bring up in particular, is a situation where we have drainage pipes to the street through curb from residents and their sump pumps. Now, technically, these are obviously not allowed, but at this point in town, they are essentially everywhere. And to try to fight that would be probably more detrimental to the residents than it would be a benefit. So the reason I bring this up is because you pave somewhere like with PSCNG and their standard is simply mill two inches and put back two inches. In situations where these are already currently blocked, we did have an issue where there was some, some pipes that were already blocked. When they mill and put it back, essentially residents complained that they're blocking their pipe. So I do want to essentially examine where the town likes to stand with these pipes, not just for PSCNG, but for future projects. Because it has become an issue that's like come up a few times.
We can't ask the resident to put the, I'll call that stormwater. Into our sewer system, because that would bring up our cost of paying for sewer.
Correct.
I do understand what you're saying about the pipes that come to the curb and below the reveal, in some cases, below the asphalt line. So how many of those are in question here in reference to falling below the?
Asphalt.
The asphalt level?
At this point, I don't have a particular number, they just seem to pop up as we do roads in our own project, PSCNG's projects. I mean, like, it's definitely, I would say, a significant percentage, like if I were to take a guess, like, I could say something like 10% maybe.
Now, these are pumps coming out, right?
Yes.
So the water's being pumped, so why can't we just have either the contractor? Probably not, we don't want him going on the property, but the resident, bring up their pipe, even if they're going uphill with it, it's, there's still a pumping, back pumping. And get into the reveal of the curb above the asphalt level.
Yeah, certainly, if you're doing curb and that situation, it works, you replace the curb and you just put the hole slightly higher. And that's what we have to solve some circumstances. If we're doing curbs.
Yeah.
If not, I mean, essentially, they, they do have to put back at least one and a half inches for the asphalt to be considered, you know, adequate thickness.
But let me ask you this, if it's below the asphalt level now, it's really not pumping anything then?
It's partially submerged, so it, it, I mean, it could be, you know, getting rid of some water. Naturally, the town gets blamed as soon as something happens, which will conveniently happen after the road has been paved. So I guess what I'm saying is, it might be a good idea for us to just have a method of dealing with these, these pipes. And what is our, what is our standard?
It sounds like, being that we're paving a road, the liabilities are, so we don't want to put additional encumbrance on, on the residents. So what I would suggest, and I told them for conversation, is that we would have to go and cut the curb out. So I'll cut the curb on both sides, raise the pipe and pour the pipe above the, the road level. And then put the curving back. That's just my, my opinion, I don't, I don't see any other way out of this, but. Anybody have any questions on that? Do you? Okay, okay, moving along.
Yeah, so that pretty much essentially.
What's your opinion on, on the resolution here?
For, sorry, what we do with the, the pipes themselves?
Yeah.
I do believe that we have to essentially, I mean, my personal opinion, we have to leave it as the responsibility of the resident. Technically, the fact that we let them have the pipes themselves in the curb is already us, you know, giving them slack, which is absolutely fine. We're not in the business of trying to make life difficult for residents, but the idea is that it's kind of, they're, you know, in engineering, one of the first thing, at least in this one, you know, one of the first thing they always tell you is, our road doesn't have to meet your driveway, your driveway has to meet our road, which is, is a strange saying, but essentially what it means to say is that we are a town and the residents come here, you know, to enjoy living. In which case, it is their responsibility to make sure that their, you know, their requirements are being met as far as if they have water in their basement, that it's properly draining, it's not the town's responsibility. Certainly, we won't cause a problem, but we don't have to solve a problem just because, you know, they're experiencing it and they want to.
Okay, it's Monday morning, we just paved the road, we got six calls, people calling in that we blocked up their sump pump. Now, give me an answer.
If we blocked up their sump pump, then.
The line going to the street.
Yeah, if we, when you say blocked up their sump pump, I mean, I would assume you mean that we got asphalt in their drain, which is absolutely our responsibility to clean it out. But if the, if the condition of the pipe is the same as what it was when we first started, then I don't believe we can really take responsibility for that unless.
So you'd have to take pictures of all this?
Yes.
Okay, so to, to Ali's point, if half of the pipe is submerged and it, and it ends up being the same condition, he feels that we shouldn't be liable for that. Now, in order to track that properly, you're going to have to have film on each and every situation like that.
Correct.
If the pipe is blocked and wasn't blocked before, that's our, our situation. And once again, you would alleviate that by seeing it ahead of time and then we would cut out the curb and move the pipe up.
Correct, yeah.
If it's below the asphalt level.
Yeah, and.
Existing.
Yeah, if we're doing curb, we can certainly raise it.
I think in this case, you're going to have to bend towards the residents to alleviate problems. See what they, what it's going to cost us for the saw cut, say, eight inches of, of curb. And then, then there's a patching process there.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, doesn't mean we got to take the curb out and it's entirely, it just means we'll just take out maybe six, seven, eight inches. Get below the road level with the demolition of the curb. And so it's locked by the road, follow?
Yes.
And then, then we can apply.
Yeah, certainly, and this is last, now, regular contractors are doing a project, this is less of an issue because they're usually a lot more understanding, but I think we need to be consistent. So the idea being that, in particular, it's hard to deal with companies such as PSCNG, who obviously, you know, we have really no choice, unless we have a set of standards that we know, okay, we all agree on this is how, the way it has to be done, as opposed to, you know, he said, she said, this is how we do it, or this is how we do it, it just becomes a nightmare.
Now, when we're doing a road. Strike that, when PSCNG is doing a road for us.
Yes.
And we got a curb situation. We go in with our own contractor to do the curbs?
Uh, no, so currently, if PSCNG paves a road, we do not necessarily, they won't, they won't touch curb. So if we want to do curb, yes, we would come with our own contractor, but we don't do curb just because PSCNG is doing a road necessarily, at least not at this point.
Oh, yes, we do.
Due to our new ordinance, you mean?
Well, if they're going to pave a road, we don't want curbless roads there. So the policy we agreed on was that curbs would be recognized and fixed prior to them paving.
Yeah, so to add to that.
Are we on the same page with that?
I know, of course, I know what you're saying. With that ordinance we passed, but the question, which is the same reason why PSCNG is not obligated to, say, satisfy ADA either, they don't have to do a ramp, is because technically they're not doing a repavement.
So who does that?
Repairing. Technically, like, we are, the ordinance has applied to us since we decided to make it apply to us. ADA obvious compliance would apply to us. PSCNG is considered a special case and it's a kind of weird situation, to be honest, just because, some reason, rules don't always seem to apply to PSCNG. But like I said, it's the loophole kind of being that they are not doing, they're not repaving a road, they're repairing, you know, a trench. And that's kind of how it's understood.
So I understand that, but just so that we're clear. Public service, after Daniel did his thing of working, working it out to where all parties are in agreement and square footage. Well, public service is going to go pave the road.
Okay.
That's who paves the roads that, that we work out.
Yeah, we can do an agreement where they pave a full road.
Okay, before that, it's your job to go in to see if any curbs have to be done.
Okay.
And if any handicap ramps have to be done.
Okay.
Or in this case, maybe even an apron, so that there's not a tripping hazard.
Yes.
So that's standard procedure for us now, correct?
Okay, yes. Like I said, that only applies to situations where PSCNG, we make an agreement, like, normally they wouldn't even do a full road. The only time they do a full road is if we swap with them, we take this and they do that.
We're in a swap situation now. And I'm sure that's coming up now, right?
Yeah.
Correct, so my, my concern is that when we strike to deal with, if they owe us 10,000 square feet. Going straight down the road and we, we say, okay, give us half, but go from curb to curb.
Okay.
In that curb to curb, it's still our responsibility to fix the curbs. And, and now this situation here with the pipes still.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
We're in agreement with that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so from this point on, obviously, if they're doing a half road, which we no longer do, that the situation is different. But since we do full roads, the town will be taking the responsibility as the, as the entity that is paving, even though it's PSCNG, in which case, we will be taking care of the curb where it's needed.
So my question to you now is, since we've made, passed this ordinance, has there been any roads that?
Needed curb to be replaced?
That public service is paved already or is in a process of paving, that we haven't applied?
The curb rule.
The code rule.
The one in question, which I, I can get back to you with, with more information to figure that out. And question Martha has been paved, I don't know if it's full or half, but Martha has been paved and this not, this hasn't taken place. So if, we have not inspected curb on that when they did their pavement, or I have not.
Okay, you're scaring me right now. Because we come to that conclusion, we came to that resolve, we passed an ordinance. And now there's a question mark that maybe a road has been paved without that consideration, is that possible?
Yes.
Okay. How many roads have they done that there was no consideration for the curb then?
That I would have to get back to you to get an actual number.
I don't want to seem like this is a witch hunt, but what, what fell apart here?
So just a misunderstanding that if PSCNG is doing the road, they're not, they're not paving for the town, they're paving for themselves and they're doing repair work as opposed to paving the road.
I think we were clear, counsel, am I right? We were clear, any paving going forward, no matter who did it, there would be curb consideration. So the ball has been dropped here.
Mayor, we, the ball's only dropped if there, those roads had significant curbing that needed to be done. The only full-length road that was paved just now by PSCNG is Martha Avenue. Kip, there was maybe a third of it done, and then Mill Street, Gateway, and Craig Court, which are very small streets. But I think the issue is that the engineer has extremely limited involvement on PSCNG projects, to begin with, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry.
So yeah, there, there is definitely a limitation on what I, how far I am involved in PSCNG. Obviously, the intention is they are supposed to be going through me before they do work. PSCNG does not always actually coordinate with me when they're going to do work. This has become an issue on multiple occasions where I've requested and they have not actually coordinated with me before they did work until after, it's been too late. I have asked them in numerous emails that before they pave the street, to let me know and that doesn't happen, so.
Okay, that, that's, sounds reasonable. Mike, can we set up a procedure here so that this doesn't happen in the future? With public service explaining to them that we need to be notified, because we want, want the option to do repairs on curbing that might not exist, et cetera?
Yeah, well, this needs to be spoken about at a pre-con meeting by our engineer and, you know. With the, with PSCNG and whoever their contractors that they bring to the pre-con meeting. So we either negotiate with, with them, or we bring in our own curb guy.
Well, that's it, the, the whole point here is we're not asking them to do the, the work. We're asking to be notified or stop them before they do pave it, so that we can fix what we have to do in preparation for their paving.
Yeah, that I understand, and like I said, there have been, you know, pre-construction meetings and there have been emails and there have been conversations where they're supposed to coordinate and they do not. I can sometimes know the roads that they are paving, but I'm not just patrolling the street to a point where I can see, hey, they started to work here. So it does very much fall on them, I can tell you that they will be resistant to these kinds of implementations, because as far as they're going to see it, it's just as.
We don't care if they're resistant to it, because this is our town, our streets are curbs.
Okay.
We don't want to go backwards, you're paving a road and there's no curb. What's wrong with that picture? We've cured that problem within ourselves and pushed the ordinance. Now, alls we have to do is insist that, and I think we can control that, Mike, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take care of it, we'll make sure that you're notified. Then at that point, the ball's yours.
Okay.
All right, and we clearly understand.
Yes.
No curb, no paving, I don't care who's doing it.
Okay.
No curb, no paving, we have to get in there and put a curb in first and then we'll, we'll, we'll agree to having the paving done.
Okay.
So Mike, we got to get to them.
Just got to be communicated at the pre-con meeting. If they refuse, we'll go up the chain and we'll talk to those in charge and get.
Timeout, give us time to fix the curb and, and what we don't want to do is have that, you're at the pre-meetings, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so that's where you got to speak up.
I do.
Okay.
And they just don't, they don't take heed.
All right. Okay.
All right, so that does actually conclude the, the, the report, the last thing is the presentation, which doesn't have to be too long. Essentially, I will pass out this.
So Ali, we have, I moved these speakers so that the public could hear you a little bit better. Where will you be speaking from so that they can continue to hear you?
I could actually speak from here, because I'm going to be passing out these to you guys, I mean, I do have the one large image.
Okay.
Over here, but you guys can see the same images on this.
So just a reminder to everyone to please talk as loud as possible, and the speaker is now over there, so it's a little bit further than usual. So just a reminder to everyone to please talk as loud as possible, and the speaker is now over there, so it's a little bit further than usual.
Does he got a microphone?
He has one right there, yeah.
Okay.
So essentially, this is a project that we've been working on, which is yet to be named, so perhaps something that the council would like to vote on, just like they did for the, or, it's still in the process of doing for the Vietnam Veterans Park.
Dundee Lake.
Dundee Lake. All right, it sounds like we have the name, Dundee Lake. So essentially, this project started out as a project which is just something that, to make the town more aesthetically pleasing, to make the town have certain landmarks, to improve recreation in the area. But since then, this project has taken off further, you know, through collaboration with Councilman Galabek, Chief and Borough Administrator, and the mayor, and other parties involved, various councilmen and women. We've decided to kind of take this and incorporate it into our master plan. Essentially, not only is this lake just an aesthetic that would be similar to other towns, which have similar aesthetics, like Little Ferry or Clifton, but, and Garfield, but it would also serve a function. So the function is essentially to use this lake as a regional detention or retention, depending on how we're planning to go about this basin, so that way we can try to alleviate stormwater issues in the borough. At this point, the point of the lake is to hold capacity, which, under normal circumstances, the lake would remain full. But when we know a storm is coming, we would be able to let water out through a control valve, possibly either into the covert on, under Mola or through Flush's Brook. And then when there comes the point that you have intense rainfall, we might be able to retain some of the water there, so it stops flooding either in areas nearby or potentially in just the immediate area. That being said, there's a lot of other discussions as far as trying to implement, you know, travel, encouraging pedestrian travel. There's talks about how we're trying to improve this entire area from the parks, the veteran parks, that are south to the tank park, to the intersection, for a general improvement to the town from the, from the center of beautification. So this started out as a lake, which had aesthetics, and we wanted to include, had become functional as well. We have, we have gone over some construction costs, and at this point, we believe some, a lake of this size and of this caliber could cost approximately 1.2 million. This is including some additional things that we've recently implemented, which is aeration equipment, as well as various other aesthetic elements, such as a gazebo, a walking path, trees, lighting, et cetera. At this point, through calculations, we can say that the lake is likely to be able to hold a total of 2.2 million gallons, which is a little more than three Olympic swimming pools of water. And through some calculations, just to put into perspective, I mean, obviously, the borough is large, but we could potentially hold 1% of the runoff in Elmwood Park with this lake, total. Not that it would happen consistently, this might be if we were to completely empty the lake, but that does completely depend on how deep we decide to go. So on this note, we would like to take this for the consideration of the council, which is something that not only would be aesthetic, that people may enjoy the residence, but also something that could alleviate a problem in Elmwood Park, that has obviously played Elmwood Park, because it's, it's, it's ground, it's groundwater, it's elevations, it's very flat. And that is what we've brought to you today in this rendering.
Ali.
Yes.
You say that this would be connected into our drainage system throughout the town?
Correct.
Have you done a engineering study on that in terms of elevations, with the drainage aspect of it? The lines coming into it?
Yes and no. We've done a basic assessment based on knowledge that we have, based on maps that we have, but we can't rely on that. This is still a very much preliminary, very much preliminary project, and we wanted to bring to the council's attention before we take on any costs. There are two aspects that we really need to analyze before this can take off, which is, one is the elevations, but even before that is the soil conditions in the park. You know, this is a separate cost of what you see in front, to the 1.2 million that we are currently assessing at. This could cost as much as, say, 50,000 to like, do a test, it could be less as well, but the thing with subsurface conditions is the more testing you do, the more likely you are to get a better picture of what's underground. So we have done some basic elevation assessments, considering that Mola Boulevard does run south on the Boulevard, just bordering the lake. There is definitely the capability to tie into it, but it also depends on how deep we can bring the lake, what is the, you know, what is the groundwater level in that area. So there are a bunch of different aspects that have yet to be tested, but this is, this is the concept, this is the plan, this is what we'd like to do. And if we do decide to go forward with it, if we're interested in this idea, and all other issues have been quelled by anyone who doesn't, you know, has an issue with this lake, then we can perhaps give the proceed for testing to figure out if this is something possible, or, you know, if, you know, it's definitely possible.
So what you're saying is that before we go into a feasibility, feasibility study, that you would like the blessing of the council, that's what you're saying here?
Correct, to do testing, which could be of decent expense.
Okay. Now, I think the council would wanna know, before they gave their blessings, the extent of the cost of this project.
Okay.
And what I also think, and I think it's a great idea, by the way, I like, I like the whole aspect of it, the picture, offer the road and all that. I think before, we should give our blessings and, and start incurring costs, that we should talk to the people that are gonna be removed from this site and get their feel, so that we know that we don't, not gonna go through this whole procedure and then come to a stumbling block, because there's one of the entities that are now using this field that say, no, or they're just being stubborn. So I, I think that should be the sequence.
Yeah, if I could just jump in.
Trying to figure he would.
If I, if I could just take like a huge step back from, from all the specifics and everything. This was born a few months ago, when I just had a thought, an idea of, you know, we have this large rec center in the middle of, you know, open spaces at the rec center, in the middle of Market and Boulevard, as we're trying to spruce up and redevelop parts of Market Street and create that corridor, that downtown feeling. And I thought to myself that that open mishmash of fields, when there's no sports going on, is basically just empty space that could be better utilized. And just the thought came in my head, how beautiful would it be to have a lake, like you see at Danard's Lake on Midland Ave and Garfield, or something like that, that could consistently attract people all day and make that open space like the hub of people at four or five o'clock every afternoon? Knowing that the fields that you displace can easily, easily be figured out through our other parks, through the county property, and through the school district property. So, so that's that. I, I think the, the original thought was just a lake for, for aesthetic purposes, for, for recreation purposes. At some point, it morphed into a water and drainage situation that, I, I don't know anything about that, about that part, whether we should do it or shouldn't do it, I don't know anything about that. But I think, you know, this is like, it looks pretty defined, but I think step one is like, for the council to figure out, you know, would we entertain a change in the use of the rec center, of that space, for something like this? Knowing that we can move all these different fields and make it all work through our different parks and fields at the high school.
But how do you know that without going, going into conversation with these different entities?
Mayor, you wanted this on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
You put this on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not, I didn't, I didn't foresee myself to be in a position to have all those answers for you, because I'm still very much on the step of, is the council open and interested in having a lake there with people and moving these sports to different parts of town? I'm still very much in that mode, which is, you know, why, whether this 1.5 or 2 or 2.5 is something that we're, we're not quite at yet.
And I, I understand that, but now the question is of spending money to get some type of a knowledge of what it's gonna cost, so.
I agree, I agree with, with you. I, you know, I see what you're trying to say also, but I do agree that you have to talk to the people that play the sports on those fields to see if everybody is happy with this idea. Do they think it's a good move to go to the other fields by the school? Do they think it's better for our children to play on this field? I don't know, it's, it's, like Dan said, we're way ahead. This has to have much more discussion. This is the first time I'm even hearing of this. And to see a picture and it's kind of starting already, like, I don't know, I think there has to be a lot more involved, because Ali is saying that the cost to investigate it more would be a considerable amount. So if we're gonna spend a considerable amount of money, I think there has to be much more discussion on the table from other community members that head these sports teams and everything else, before we invest money in checking out everything else.
Yeah, before we spend a dollar, I think we gotta do some more perfunctory parts of this, which would be some, some consultation with the entities that we're gonna evict, in a sense, poor choice of words, maybe. But that would be the proper procedure. That, that doesn't mean that we're stifling this, it just means that let's, let's, let's go through the proper, proper procedure.
So what happens if we go to them and they say, we don't wanna move, we're happy staying there, we don't wanna move? Does that take away the use of this for the rest of the population of the town? For one group that doesn't wanna move, that can function somewhere else?
No, it means that that opens up another discussion for us, but we have to start at point A before we get to point B's discussion.
And I think the residents of this town should be notified too, and have, let them come in and discuss it with us too. Because this is, this is not just the rec department or the high school or anything, this is the whole town getting involved. And we need this whole town involved, because this is their taxpayers' dollars that we're gonna be spending. So I think everybody should be involved. First goes to the rec department, then whatever we decide, then we bring it to the town and have an open, you know, open forum for everybody to come and speak their, you know, what they wanna know and what they wanna say.
Councilman?
Because I think everybody does it.
Yes, my position is that I feel like we have this big plot of land in the middle of our downtown area, and to utilize that in this way would be an anchor for our downtown, especially in a, in a time when we're trying to, you know, revive that area of the town. I think this would bring not only residents down there, but it would also bring people from other communities to utilize that space and to also utilize our businesses down on Market Street. So I think to, to stifle, and not to stifle, but to, to prolong this would be kinda against ourselves in, in the sense where we, you know, for, for a few sports, you know, we, we have a great enough relationship with our Board of Education, and we have a lot of fields to accommodate the sports, I think we, we, we could make it work.
I think what we should do is get in touch with the girls softball, get in touch with the bombers, get in touch with the high school, because the Babe Ruth Field would, would be moved to the high school, access to the Babe Ruth Field, go to the high school? Is that in part of the plan?
Mayor, there's a, there's a lot of thoughts, but I mean, you, you asked to put this on and we're having like a, like a free.
And we're having a conversation.
No, we're having a free-for-all conversation, but I think the problem is, is that this conversation, to this point, was limited to a few of us, and now it's on an agenda, and we clearly don't have all the answers, which was not my preferred way of going about it. But my, my only thought with the, I think this is a great idea, and I think at the end of the day, if we do it, it'll be, everything that Councilman Fosso said 100% correct. I think what we need to do is for these few organizations that use that field, I don't necessarily think ask for permission, but engage in dialogue, but have a plan of our own. Because if you just tell them you're gonna be displaced and without concrete where you're gonna go, the first thing is everyone's comfortable and, and they're gonna, they're gonna do pushback. And not, no one group should have the power to stop something that would benefit so many more people, that's just my only point.
Oh, I'm gonna come.
Well, no, wait.
Go ahead.
You know, the softball teams or the baseball teams says we can't use the field, I mean, I don't think we need permission to use the field.
Why are we opening this to the public right now? Oh, that's Frank, I'm sorry. Sorry, Frank.
Mayor, I'm still here.
You're gonna have to repeat yourself, sorry.
I was saying, I don't think we stop the project for the entire town just because we need the field for softball or, you know, the bombers. I think this is doing us a big disservice to stop, you know, if, if one of the sports groups says no, do we stop the entire project?
Francesca, we're not saying stop it, we're just explaining to everybody, I am explaining to everybody that I never saw this before tonight, and a couple of the other council people didn't see it before tonight, and I think this should have been discussed with us first, before it went out to everybody else, and that's now gonna see it on this, you know, forum. And they're gonna be up in arms, because nothing was discussed before, and now all of a sudden, it's out in the public, that we're gonna put a lake, we're gonna put Dundee Lake in, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and that's how it's gonna go down. And it's gonna cost us 1.2 million, that's what it's gonna be.
I understand what you're saying, but this is our work meeting to discuss this.
But we didn't see it before, we didn't have a discussion, so we just saw it now, and you're saying we're gonna do this, you're gonna do that.
You have a councilman who's presenting it. This is it, this is the beginning.
No, but you, certain, certain council members did see it before now, and I object that we didn't, all of us. But he didn't get to see it tonight, that he knew it was gonna be on the agenda.
It was my idea, but this is not me presenting it tonight, to be clear.
That's what I'm saying, Dan, that's what I'm saying, that you brought it up, half of us didn't see it, and I thought, you know, we should have all saw it before now, Ma, we should have been discussed.
We, the difference is that this is the forum, this is our work meeting. Just because we got mics in front of us when I used it, that doesn't mean it's not a work meeting. This is where we discuss it, all this is, is discussion right now, that's all it is. So I, I understand what you're saying, but there was, there's no, nobody sat and said, we're gonna do this and we're gonna slip it by the council. That's, that wasn't the intent, the intent was, the councilman had an idea, presented to the council, that's what we're doing.
And how did we get, how did we get the plans?
We requested it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you requested it, but none of us thought about this coming.
No, Doris, hold on, Doris, let me take responsibility for this. This came about, I asked the engineer to present something to the council, so the council had something to decide on. I don't understand what's wrong with that.
I, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong, but certain people talked about it, you presented it to him.
Well, how does an idea be born without discussion? He brought it up, I talked to the mayor every day, and we looped the engineer in and said, present something to the council.
We said, bring it to the council, that's what we're doing.
I'm only saying that you discussed it, but the rest of us didn't know anything about it till tonight. It would have been nice, when you discussed it to give it to Ali, to bring it to us. You could have said, oh, by the way, tonight we're gonna do.
Call you and say we're.
Well, it would be nice, or Aaron could have sent it to us and say, this is, you know, what we're gonna present tonight.
Then you put it on the agenda?
Well, it's under the engineer's report.
Yeah, but it's the point that we should have been told.
Did this cost us anything?
No, 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 I'm not, no, no, no.
Doris, Doris, Doris. Ali, Ali, did this cost us anything?
No, it has not cost you guys anything at all.
So as a favor, a councilman had an idea.
It takes a lot of work and effort to get this done, to present to you, and you're making it sound like somebody did something wrong, I don't understand.
This is, well, it's really not, this is the second time I'm saying this, so, all right. Well, in any case, procedure now. My recommendation, and I, I disagree with the councilman, that we can't have three entities that are not satisfied with whatever we're gonna give them to move them from this location. So I, yes, if it was two, one out of three, then we can be, and we know the project is beneficial to the rest of the town, and they're just being stubborn on that, I would agree with you. But all three of them could come back at us and say, no, what are we getting in return? I think we need to present them what they're gonna get in return, that's the next step.
And I think that's what Dan said, we should, we should outline the plan and say, here's the plan. Here's where you're going, here's where you're going, here's where this is going. That's our plan. I don't think we should go to them and say, what do you guys think, what should we do? Then they're, they're gonna tell you, we're fine where we are, we don't want anything.
Oh, I get that, I get that aspect.
We're the leaders, you're the leaders of the town, and you presented to them, here's our plan. Not ask them where you wanna go.
Mayor.
Can I say something? Since I haven't yet.
Yeah.
I, I think this is really, really, you did a nice job with this, Dan, thank you for bringing this to us. This is a nice addition. I don't think, I understand your thoughts, but I don't think we need permission from any of these entities. I do believe that whoever it is to sit down with them and say, well, this is where you will be going, this is where we have, we have, like you said, a plan for this. This is where we have, like you said, a plan for this." Because I know, being on the rec. board for the last three years, there's always something. Like if soccer comes in at a certain point on a field that belongs to softball, there's always, there's always problems or arguments sometimes, but just sometimes we have to do this or do that and move them around a little bit. So not always they accept something that we change. Like I said, for the last three years, I would hear soccer is on the field, and they don't move this off of the field for the softball game, or we can't do softball in the fall because another team is there. But they got to work together. So as long as we're not taking something without giving them something, they might say, "Wow, this is great," because they're also residents in this town, and we're trying to beautify the town. So I agree, if we could put it in a plan, and I think this is just to show us and say, "Hey, what do you guys think? Do you like the idea or not?" I don't think they're going to start the project tomorrow, right? So I think, you know, to at least to talk to them and just say, "This is what we'd like to do," not to get the permission from them. And I have to believe that they say, "This is great. This is great." I mean, that's my opinion.
Can I add one thing to that? I also think that if we decide that we're going to, we think we're going to move forward with this, I agree with Councilman Wetchler, that we should have the public and have one we can open up and have them come in and explain our thoughts on how we think this can benefit our community, and make sure that our residents feel comfortable with this. I agree with her wholeheartedly. Pay a lot of taxes in this town, and this is a big project, and I'm not against it. I think it's admirable what Dan brought up, and I think it can be good for our community. But I agree with Doris. This has to be where our community members, not just us, yes, I know, we're the leaders, but I don't think 10 people or 12 people just decide on a million-dollar project like that without the blessings from our residents. I'm sorry, that's the way I feel. If I wasn't up here, I'd want to say, I'd want there to be a meeting and say, "You can come and give your thoughts, Mrs. Pellegrini," or whoever. I think they have the right to give their thoughts and input on it. I think it could be very great. I'm not against it at all. You know, it looks beautiful and all, but I think we have to get kind of everybody's feeling on this and, you know, see what everybody else thinks. It's not just 10 people that decide on everything. I don't feel that way. I think it's everyone's town, and we're the leaders, but we need input, and we need our residents to be happy with something like this, too. This is a big project.
Erin, please say something.
Yeah, sorry. Just to kind of reel this conversation in, I think that everyone has made amazing points, and I think this is where the committees come into play and why they're so important. So, I mean, just a suggestion, you have the recreation committee. Perhaps they could meet with, you know, the borough administrator, Ali, any council members that have feedback, comments, suggestions. You kind of all have seen the general idea. Send it to, you know, that liaison, and then once that committee has met, they can come back and present something to you guys, more concrete, and then meet, as you said, once a more solid plan has come to fruition.
Council, any thoughts on that recommendation?
No, I think it's a great idea. Thanks, Erin.
So my question is, I guess it was just presented to say, "Hey, do you guys like this? I'm thinking that's what this was tonight, right? Do we like the idea?"
Because we're sitting on here, we're acting like it's a public thing because it's being videoed. This is the same discussion we would have at the back table. So I don't think if there was anything behind it. It's just that we're, it's just new. It's very preliminary. You know what I mean? So, yeah, there's still a lot of talk to have it, but I'm glad that it was brought to our attention.
Just to see if we like the whole idea or the concept. Like, oh, no, we don't like it, then, okay, it's off the table. But do we put that on the table for more discussion is really the question, right?
So I think we're all in agreement, the concept is, we're in agreement with the concept.
Right, but we can't move forward to...
No, no, we're not. This is just discussion.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I think the next step should be to start developing a plan, whether it's with the committee or whatnot, or not, to see where these other people can be moved to, if that's feasible, if the school's on board, if the other parks are feasible for that, which we did some preliminary, you know, assessments of that. It certainly seems like it could be done. And then bring that back to the council. If those things work out, then we bring the groups in and say, "Here's our plan. Here's what we're looking to do." And then like Lorraine wants to do is get community input, but not until we're at the point where we know it can go. Then before we pull the trigger, we get community input.
Yeah, agreed.
Even the Board of Rec. obviously would be great to have, you know, show them and...
And the director.
Right? Editor, director.
Well, you're, what you're going to have to do is get to the autonomous organizations, softball and the bombers, get input from them. In agreement, we got the final word. I understand that. But we want it to be conducive. We don't want it to where you've got 300 people out here saying, "What are you guys doing?"
But we have to roll the plan out, and say, "Here's the plan."
Yes. And if we cover all our bases, it's going to fly.
Sure.
And what I would do when it comes to the bombers and it comes to girls softball, and I brought it out earlier, we were talking about it, which is, they have a concession stand, and they have a bathroom and a field. So you can't give them anything less than that. With the bombers, they have, oh, and the girls softball has an equipment room also.
Right.
All right? So...
At the hut.
At the hut, yeah. And the bombers are upstairs.
We need to, you know, obviously, we did have a memorial there, too, for any Adamo and Tom Clark that we started when they were passed, right? By the flagpole there, so it's just, why not for that?
Yeah. I, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're, but the, I think you get, like Mike said, you get permission from the high school to move the Babe Ruth Field, and we got to know the scheduling, too. Got to make sure the scheduling works. Get to the bombers and tell them we're going to give you a new facility, so-and-so, you're going to end up with more than less. Get to Babe, to girls softball, you're going to end up with more than less. I think if you approach it that, and cost factors. We need numbers, too, because the next step, if, let's say we got through all that process, the next step is starting to spend money with our engineer, because he cannot determine what this is going to cost until he does some test bits. And engineering as far as the water system. That's a big one.
But one thing, just to take consideration, is one of the good things about this project is you can really, you could come at it from many different angles. If you can't use it for stormwater, it could still be aesthetic. If it can't be aesthetic, it could still be functional. Even if we don't have an set of lake, there could still be a walking path. Obviously, we're trying to beautify the whole location. Just because the stormwater element doesn't take place, doesn't mean the whole project is scrapped. So on that note, obviously, we can do all these various things.
How about the aspect of moving water? Okay, you're going to use aeration with a pump, I get that, like you see in Saddle Brook, and I don't know if they have one in Garfield, but I would assume they do.
Yeah.
But what's going to keep the water...
Moving.
And not stagnant?
That's one of the beauties of making it a stormwater project and not just aesthetic, because when it becomes a stormwater project, there is encouraging, you do encourage water flow, you know, emptying or putting in, and on top of that, which, to be honest, might end up being the path we take anyway, there has to be a way to fill this lake. Obviously, you can let water rain into it until eventually it fills, but utilizing stormwater systems might be the most effective way to fill it. You can take it from the Passaic River, and worst-case scenario, if you want to, you know, if you want to just fill it, just till it's full and then no longer use it for stormwater purposes, you can aerate it after that point. You can treat it so it's not considered a storm runoff, and it's actually considered fresh water. There was discussions how maybe you guys could even stock it with fish, and then there could be, you know, yeah, fishing, just something, another aesthetic thing. So really, this, the beauty of this project is you really go in any direction. It doesn't have to just, it doesn't, it doesn't die just because one thing doesn't work out.
Thank you, Ali. Now, so let's recap here. Do we want to form a committee that can bring us to that point of conversation with the entities that might be moved, conversation with the school, so that we can get to that next step? Is that, is that what we want to do?
Sorry, Francesco?
I said, "I believe that's a good step." Mr. Superior Committee.
The council?
I think Danny should be in charge of it.
Okay, but before we get to that, are you in agreement that we should have that?
Yes.
You in agreement, Sandy?
So this committee, what would this committee be doing? What would be the point of the committee?
I think their objective would be to see if this is feasible with all parties in concern. Girls softball, the bombers, the high school, and who am I forgetting?
Mayor.
Babe Ruth, that would be the school.
If I may interject a little bit. This council is a governing body that is fully in charge of doing any projects in this town.
You talked a lot about that, I understand.
There is, there is no doubt in my mind that, at first, and this is a great idea, and I really admire it, in a sense that it's a start to lifting the town into a state where it really becomes conducive to come here, to move, rather than move out. But this is a concept. You have the concept, and I think the first step is, if you all agree that the concept is a good idea, you create this one commission or a group, a committee, which will look at this idea, this concept, and prepare any kind of options that are available before you even talk to anyone about anything. Because once you have this concept and you start looking at the idea, and the committee looks at the idea, you can make provisions to any possible questions or movements of football fields or whatever. And then when you're ready to bring it to the actual public, you have already a concept with ideas in place where you could answer the questions. That's when then you get the input of the various little organizations, not whether they're going to like to move, but to understand that they're going to, based on the concepts that's laid out. So the answer, the answer is going to be by you telling them, not asking them whether they want to do it. It's whether they're going to do it based on the concepts, and you prepare that. That simple.
I don't know if I completely agree with that, but I would go along with it. I...
Mayor, can we, we just call somewhat of a timeout here, right? So everyone saw this, they understand that there's a concept, an idea floating around. At some point in the next few months, come back to the council and re-present this, redo this with a little more teeth and a little more detail.
Who, would the committee be doing that?
Yeah, whatever. I mean, this is not to exclude or include anyone, but I think we had one meeting in general about this. When I asked Ali to come with some kind of numbers and plot it out, we had that one meeting, and we knew at that moment, I mean, you questioned many things, that there's many things that have to be unresolved. I don't think any of those things were resolved since we had those conversations. So I think, and again, whoever wants to be involved, it doesn't really matter whether there's seven people in room five or four. I just think there's more things we need to clarify before we come back and do this one more time.
Agreed. Who's going to do that?
Whoever's interested, reach out to me. I don't know what to tell you. I mean, we're going to spend 15 minutes debating who should be on the committee, you know?
Well, all right. So basically, what you're saying is you would like to take the lead on resolving these problems, and...
I didn't create them.
I could be the lead of the committee.
Well, I'm sorry.
I could be the lead of the committee if you guys want.
You're on that committee?
Yeah, sure.
No charge, though, right?
No charge.
I don't have a real charge.
No, I think, all right, so what's up? This is what is up on the table. A committee, or Daniel, and maybe Daniel, you want to form a committee around yourself? Take a volunteer to?
Sure.
You're right about the 15 minutes to get this done.
This is a concept, a vision, without like very hard, hard details, and I would like to work with some people to work through those details.
Okay. How do we go about getting you those people?
Just whoever wants to be involved, as long as we don't have a quorum and make this into a production.
Race, who wants to be involved other than these three guys over here?
I would, as a rec. liaison.
Done. Sandy and Francesco.
Sandy, Francesco, Dan, the BA, Ali.
Oh, that excludes the mayor.
No, that's okay. No, because you know my position. I'd love the idea, I'd love to see it go to fruition. However, you've got a lot of obstacles here.
Agreed.
And once we get over them obstacles, it's just like anything else, like that damn tennis court. That was, right?
Like I said, I think it was just to bring the whole idea to us and see if we even liked the idea to begin with.
Okay, so who, wait, let's get past this, because I got to bet that...
You lost.
No, you was 9:15, weren't you?
And you were 8:45. I was 9:15, so we got 10 minutes.
I think you all lost.
Yes.
Hurry up and talk, or you're going to cost me, you're going to cost me coffee here. I got to buy these people coffee. We're betting on what time we're going to get finished tonight. So, Daniel...
Welcome to the family, Ali.
Daniel, you're going to continue on presentation to us.
Well, I have no choice now. It's in front of us.
Does anybody, anybody here want to be with him? I mean, we're talking council people here now.
You have Sandy wanted to do it, and Francesco volunteered, so you have your three... You have your three councils.
Who would agree?
Sandy.
Sandy, okay.
Francesco and Dan.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We're done.
Good.
Thank you, Ali.
Could you put everything in fast motion?
I got it.
So we can win the bet? You know, could we talk faster?
We have another fine message you guys have to make. I just want you guys to appreciate it.
The shoe is a chair.
Thanks, Ali.
Thank you.
How's our Sunday getting?
All right. Are you guys ready to switch gears? Yeah.
Do I still get a Christmas card? Do I, I still get a Christmas card?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mike, you have that one, too? Ali, you have the next one of those?
General customer ones?
Okay, can I request it, please? But she didn't share.
Mike, who owns that property? Did you find out?
He doesn't know, I gotta check with Lori.
Okay. 'Cause we could always get a, um...
It might be part of that property that's been, whoever it is. And we have a track.
All right. Okay, so moving on to item number two for the evening, which is correspondence. Two A, we have notification from the New Jersey Turnpike Authority on a public hearing to take place on September 9th, and that's in regards to the Garden State Parkway Bridge over Passaic River on Route 46 and River Drive, and the replacement and widening of that bridge. So just an FYI, if anyone wants to participate, it will be held virtually. Two B is just, um, correspondence from the township of Saddle Brook. It's their zoning ordinance, it's a requirement by law for them to notify surrounding communities. Any questions? And then three C is a shared service offering from the Village of Ridgewood in regards to, um, a water shared service. So they attach the services that they can offer if the Borough of Elmwood Park is ever interested in the future.
Can we ever do that?
We currently use Passaic Valley.
Well, we never shared services, right?
Not with, that's okay, not with another municipality. And actually, just, um, as a forewarning, we'll be discussing a recommendation from the DPW superintendent next week that he wanted to talk to the borough administrator about, so it will tie into that as well.
See, they already heard about our water, Dundee Lake, that we're gonna, and they wanna get, get in on it, see?
So that's all I have for correspondence. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, moving on to resolutions. Three A is shared services with the County of Bergen regarding a bonfire software company that they have sent to their municipalities that they currently have a shared service with, because it's the company that they'll be utilizing. Any questions? Okay, that will be put on reso, and then also a shared service with the County of Bergen regarding snow plowing. The Borough of Elmwood Park has some county roads, so, um, when our DPW attends to those county roads, they will be reimbursing the borough for those services. So that is also all lined out there for you. And then lastly, under resolutions, we have our after-school program counselors that will be utilized with the Recreation Department under three C. Any questions? That's all we have for resolutions. The only ordinance we had was the stormwater, which will be introduced and was under the engineer's report. So with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for committee reports.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Committee reports, so let's start off with Mr. Fasolo.
Uh, progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gullambeck.
Progress.
Mrs. Ingui.
Progress.
Mrs. Pellegrine.
Progress.
Mrs. Wettler.
Progress.
Mrs. Ballastiri.
Yeah, I wanna talk about this lake a little bit more. So, progress.
We're gonna put you in the lake.
You can go jump in that lake.
So, it's a go, then?
On the lighter side. I just had two, two things I wanted to, to comment on the tennis courts, which we kind of went over already. I do wanna compliment the contractor. Although we've been through this whole ordeal, he has stood fast and hasn't ran from the problem. And I've seen in the past where contractors see their profit margins shrinking, and they'll run from the job, and that would've just made it 10 times worse. So, to this point, I wanted to say kudos goes out to you, and until the job is done, that's when we make our, our final recommendations. So, although it's taken a little longer than usual, I, I don't think, and I think if the balance of the performance turns out right, I don't think that should be held against the guy, because he's a stand-up contractor. Number two, target date for opening this building, we've discussed this, Mike, in reference to the restrictions coming down from, from the governor, he seems to be loosening up a little with the, tomorrow, there will be 25% of indoor dining, and theaters can do 25%, up to 150. So, I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think that our target date should be October 1st, if everybody's in agreement with that, or disagreeing with it, but that, that's what we've, Mike and I have concluded to this point. Is there any objections to that?
No, I think it's a good date.
Good date, right? Okay, okay, on this side?
Unless something else comes up, Ali.
Let's hold that one in.
Go ahead, please speak, Mike.
Let's just hold that date loose in case, you know, who knows what's gonna happen, but I mean...
Openings now, we don't know.
We don't know, exactly. It might, there might be a spike, we don't know what's gonna happen with the flu and all the other stuff, so let's, uh, aim for that, but hold it loosely.
Erin, caution, okay, yeah, that sounds, and that's basically all I have. So, with that said...
Mayor, if I may, with, with that in mind, uh...
Yes.
I would have to make sure that I have the plan finished, so that...
That's why we're giving you the notice now.
Okay.
So, it's under the premise that if COVID-19 doesn't take a step back, we're going for it. Is that good? Good enough there, Michael?
Yes, sir.
All right, so October is...
Proceed.
...a tentative, okay, very good, thank you.
That's all I have, and with that, I guess I'd like to open up to the public. All in favor? Thank you.
Hi.
All participants are muted. All participants are unmuted.
Would anyone from the public like to speak at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Dominic Scalfeon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Dominic Scalfeon, 120 East 54th Street. I have two items. The first is again about English Avenue Park. We had heard a rumor, um, last year after the southern end of the park was cleared of brush and, uh, surface, that they were gonna take the playground, the young children's playground, which is at the east end, and move it to the south end. Is, is that, uh, true or not? It hasn't been done, so maybe it was just a rumor, so I'm asking that question. And then the second, um, item is that, um, County Executive Jim Tedesco has on his website, again, a posting about the Small Business Grant Program Round Two, extends from August 31st to October 5th. If you haven't seen it already, I could send you a link to it, Erin. I wondered if we could possibly put that on our website. Thank you very much, uh, council members, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, you wanna answer Portuata?
I certainly can, and I certainly will do that, Dominic. Thank you.
Okay, I will send you the link, uh, just in case, okay?
Mike, you want the first part of that?
Regarding the playground, Mr. Scalfeon, that's the first I'm hearing of it. Did any council members hear anything about that? I don't, I, that must've been a rumor, sir.
Okay, thank you, I will, I will let them know. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else care to speak?
Dean Freitag, 35 Hillman Drive.
Yes, Jeannie, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Good, good, thank you.
I wanna, um, express my displeasure once again at the way this meeting was conducted. Been listening since 7 o'clock, well over two hours, the sound is very poor. A lot of people do not speak into the microphones, I can get some here and there, there's nothing wrong with my hearing. I heard very little of the report from the engineer, and believe me, there's nothing wrong here, and I don't understand why we're not having meetings in the building. I know I'm gonna hear the COVID-19 again, it's, but I just think that other groups are having meetings in buildings, including in Elmwood Park, including the Board of Education are having their meetings, being careful about it, and I just think, you know, I overheard something about some potential projects in town. Please, finish the two projects that are ongoing, the library and the tennis courts, before anything else gets started. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Anyone else care to speak?
Jeffrey Freitag, 35 Hillman Drive. I have a few questions, as a little I could hear. Regarding, um, the amount of money being sought by Alamo regarding, I believe it was the tennis courts, $280,000, is that an additional to what they had originally quoted as the price? And if so, are they going to be paid, that amount of money?
Okay, let, let me answer that one first, Jeff. We had discussion with him, we're talking about $280 over his initial proposal, and we had thought that, that either Alamo should eat it, or the contractor should eat it. And he's going back to his boss, and, or he's gonna go back to the builder, in regards to that. The town is not gonna pay for that, I guarantee you that.
I'll just guarantee it. Uh, just, just, I, I do have one other question related to the tennis courts. Now, I heard, uh, Ms. Delaney say that there's $8,000 left in the bond?
$8,000.
What's so funny? Maybe I can be lenient, but go ahead.
I think it was me moving the microphone away from the speaker, Jeff, um, but it's $8,000.
Okay, $8,000 left in the bond?
Yes.
I don't know what that background noise is.
It's, you know, it's the public, it's someone else in the public, it's not ours.
Okay.
It must be their television. If everyone in the public listening in can please mute their lines if they're not speaking.
Okay, so $8,000 is left, does that mean that all the other monies have been dispersed?
No.
It's either dispersed or encumbered.
Right, but there...
Okay, now, I would assume at some point, given the problems, there were some other contractors brought in and did some of this work, which would bring the amount of money or expenditure either not dispersed but encumbered, and the $8,000 left in the bond, that the town maybe wouldn't have had to pay if the job was done correctly?
No.
In other words, as they moved along and used some outside contractors to correct some of the ills of the project, money was spent, did that money or those bills become encumbered?
No. What has happened here is, the original, the original contractor is responsible for the job, and what he had to do to get it to a certain specific level, he's done. There's been no additional charging, and I'm pretty sure that the majority of the money still hasn't been given to him in regards to this last procedure, which is corrected now.
Okay, I don't know, they came in that close, they had an estimate, are you telling me, given the fact that it's all, all this money right now is encumbered, except for, and there's $8,000 left in the bond, they came that close to the price? Usually, how much extra you'd normally bond, how much, how much was planned to be bonded?
Those numbers I don't have, Jeff, at this point, do, do we, uh...
I didn't think so.
Would, would we have a, a way of answering him tonight, or do we have to get back to him? Jeff, we're gonna have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I heard that before, too. I got about a lot of get-back to me. Okay, see, um, I would assume this proposal, I don't know where that's all going, because it was very sketchy, is what I heard, regarding this, uh, lake. Where would this lake be?
You, clarify that, what are we talking about? We're still talking about the...
The lake, you talked about it for about a half hour, you don't know?
Hey, hey, Jeff, hey, Jeff, listen to me. Let's be civil here.
What? This is terrible, you can't hear anything, I wouldn't be asking...
Okay, I'm saying to you, let's be civil to each other, let's have respect for each other.
Oh, my God.
That's what I'm saying. Let's have respect for each other. What's your question?
Yeah, I have a lot of respect, but unfortunately, it's not returned. I asked a question, you're still in the answer.
Mr. Freitag, the lake will be on, uh, the Borough Field.
Okay, how much money was proposed to pay Alamo? I heard something going on, I, I don't know.
Jeff, it was just a preliminary discussion, there is no proposal for design services. What he did present was done at no fee by Alamo, so nothing has been expended yet, there's no proposal for design services.
But they looked into it?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Have they looked into it?
Can't hear you, Jeff.
They, have they looked into it? They did not give a number for their design.
Have they looked into it? Yes, they have.
Very, very clearly by his presentation, Mr. Freitag, they have at least looked into it, whatever you mean by that phrase.
Okay, there's stuff in the background that's not on my end, I don't have the television on, I wouldn't do that. Is this going to be part or a spoken about? Stormwater control?
Yes, that was part of the initial conversation, including that into the total idea.
Mayor, if I could just, in 30 seconds, maybe encapsulate the conversation we had tonight, Mr. Freitag, um, I had a, a vision to explore whether the rec center, open grass space, not the baseball Borough Field, but the open grass space where there are four fields that kind of combine, whether that could be better utilized with a, a man-made lake where people could walk around, similar to Daners Lake in Garfield, if we could accommodate those fields in other parts of town. At this point, it is at its most basic point, putting the idea in front of the council, and is there enough interest to see if this can be pulled off? That's essentially the phase that this situation is at. It always has to have a start, this is the start. And as it relates to the tennis court bond, I want to say that the bond encapsulates the winning bid by the contractor, as well as, many times, the engineer's design services proposal. So, when we bond significantly over what we estimate the project to be, that is with the, the hopes and the, hopefully, the actualization, that it'll cover the project as well as design services. So I think, at the end of the day, that number comes close to the bond because of the winning bid and Alamo's design services, adding those numbers together and coming to the bond, not through change orders or additional firms being brought on. It's my understanding.
Okay, I, I don't know where the background noise is coming from. I don't know if this system, and I, I would assume there's at least gonna be one other meeting within, within this system, but I've seen Zoom meetings, participated in Zoom meetings, definitely, the town is definitely horrendous. It's terrible. I mean, I'm interested in what goes on in the town, I've lived here for 70 years, probably longer than anyone there. I, I, but that, that's inconsequential, but I, I wanna know what goes on in the town, it's the only way to know anything. I'm interested. I, I don't know if people appreciate that or not, but it's the way it is, the way I've always lived, I think. But regardless of that, the sound is terrible, if anything can be done, when you'll have these meetings, to have at least better sound, it would certainly help. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Does anyone else care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion.
All participants are muted, and they can...
May I have a motion to go into executive session, please? All in favor?
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel matters and litigation legal reports, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved, let the public be excluded from this meeting. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Fasolo, if you could exit the line, and we'll call you back.